Good evening. It is now 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. And this is our special joint work session meeting between Talmadge City Council and our Planning and Zoning Commission. We will start off by doing our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the difficult, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no clerk this evening, so I'll be conducting roll call. Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Bozick?
Here.
Councilwoman Epstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Gutman?
Here.
Councilman Pavlik? He is excused. Councilman Roy?
Here.
Councilman Rubino?
Here.
We have six members of council present. Moving on to our Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Larson?
Here.
Mrs. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Heimler?
Here.
Mr. Ryder? And Mr. Kowski?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have four of our five members for Planning and Zoning present. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Kilway. And actually, before we do that, I would just want to address one quick thing with our session rules for this evening. So, members may speak during the discussion, and we're asked to limit the discussion to no longer than five minutes. Obviously, we have a lot of members here this evening. We want to be able to get through all the material, all the information. So, when members are asked to speak once and not again until all the other members have had an opportunity to speak, traditionally, that's how our council rules are supposed to be run. We don't always abide by that, but for this evening, we're going to try to make sure we do that. And we're going to follow all the rules of council in accordance to 111.01. Mayor Kilway? And I just ask that if anyone does want to speak that does not have a microphone, please make sure to go either to the podium or grab the wireless mic, because we are live streaming tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. I want to thank everyone for being here today. Coming out for an extra meeting, I know, is always hard, and I really appreciate the time commitment that everyone on the commission and on the council have, you know, put this time forward to learn more about these overlays that we are proposing. As was stated, the purpose of today's meeting is to present the overview of the overlay mapping project for West Avenue and Neighborhood Center overlay districts. And the goal is to facilitate a more comprehensive and informed decision-making process in regards to the overlay districts. Just going through. As you can see on the first slide, this is West Avenue. Lepos is a prime example of a business that has reinvested in its location for years and years and years. This is smart investment in our city. They have been in business in Talmadge for over 75 years. And their investment to their property is exactly what we want to see and how we want the overlays to be used. Petites is another example. Prior to Petites owning this property, I believe in 1985 is when they actually purchased it, it was called Green Circle prior to that. I remember back in the 1970s, Green Circle was on the bottom floor, and there were dance studios up on top, because I took dance lessons up there. So, this building also has been around since the 1970s. Petites bought it in 85, and they kept continuing to reinvest in their business. And you can see the beautiful business property that they have there. These overlay maps, they help create this balanced, sustainable environment where existing businesses can thrive while accommodating new growth and development in a controlled manner. As you can see, it's very beneficial to our city. So, when I came into office in the beginning of January, I knew that West Avenue needed some help. We have the industrial zoning, the commercial C3 zoning, and commercial C4 zoning, as well as residential in the blue and purple. These underlying zoning codes are what has given us a little bit of trials and tribulations in getting redevelopment along. The C4 automotive use really narrows down our focus of what type of businesses can come in, as you all know. By putting these overlays, we can now allow additional uses. What does that do to existing businesses, you ask? Well, existing businesses, it doesn't really change anything at all. It will bring in, when there's areas for development, for opportunities for development, it will bring in new businesses, and it will help the existing businesses grow there. But also, when you think about it, a business, yes, they can be in business for 75 years on West Avenue if they have the right business, especially with the large number of automotives that zones that are on there, the dark red areas. Some of them are smaller parcels, and 20 years from now, maybe they're going to be ready to retire, and maybe they're going to be ready to sell their property, or sell it, maybe keep the property, but maybe have a different type of business come on their property. By putting these overlays on, they now have other uses. So, it could be something besides an automotive. It could be a daycare. It could be an antique store. It could be a number of other things, which are all spelled out in the packets that you have here. So, I'm not going to bore you with the different uses. But these overlay codes will give these property owners additional uses going forward when they're ready to sell their property. So, that will also give them the opportunity to potentially get more money for their property if they decide to sell it, because it has more use than just a car dealership or an automotive industry business. So, as you can see here, this is, the green border is all of the properties that we have preliminarily mapped out with a lot of thought and a lot of consideration where we want this overlay to be. The dark red, like I said, are the C4 automotive. The lighter peach color are general commercial. The gray areas are industrial. The items that are hashed out in green are parcels that are available for development. They're empty parcels, and I don't even, I'm just looking, I think we missed the A&amp;W site on there, too. There it is. Okay, sorry, I'm looking at it from a different angle. So, we do, and then there's also hashtagged in yellow, which are very hard to see, are city-owned properties, which are also available for development. But with these additional uses, it makes them more marketable. And that's what the goal is, is to make these parcels more marketable, so developers can come in and have more uses for it. Okay? And if you go to this next slide, you can see a couple parcels that are very, that are very good opportunities for development. The very first one here is the Serpentine, owned by Serpentine Management. It is the empty parcel to the east of where Serpentine is. It goes behind Seven Grains and comes along the front there right before, I think it's Killjoy Tattoo Parlour. That was rezoned prior to the new zoning code rewrite. That was rezoned to commercial automotive, because Serpentine had plans to make that part of their parcel. But then they were able to acquire property behind them, and it was smarter for their development to do that. So, this is now open, and right now, it has to be an automotive use. By using this West Avenue overlay, it will allow additional uses to go onto this property. And then next to it also, we do have the Kendra Tire property, that we all know Kendra is building a new facility out in the Judd. So, this property is on the market right now. It is for sale. And then we also have the Rocco property right to the right of it, that also, we know half of that facility has been torn down, and it's ready and ripe for development as well. So, again, these overlays will help promote development along West Avenue. Any questions so far for me? Anything that I need to address that I did not already address? No? Okay. All right. So, going forward, I'm going to allow Helene Hussing, our Planning and Zoning manager, to take over the rest. She has done an exceptional amount of work on this, and I thank her for everything that she's done. She's amazing.
Well, thank you for that. I'm going to stay where I'm at, because I'm also doing the computer presentation here. But I wanted to start out with the first slide, and thank you, everybody, for coming today, too. I wanted to thank everybody as well. But the main question is always, when is a map amendment appropriate? And in our zoning code that was rewritten, we have a list of standards that you're familiar with, you've reviewed, and you've made a determination against the plans whether or not the map amendment is appropriate. So, I highlighted some items here that are listed in those standards of review that pertain to this map amendment, because that's really what it is. When we are laying, doing an overlay, we're changing the zoning map. So, they're listed right here, consistent with the adopted city plans. And the city plans include our comprehensive plan, the thoroughfare plan, and any other plans that are floating around the city. And of course, the purpose of the zoning code that was just redone and introduced, the overlays, changing conditions, new planning concepts, and other social or economic conditions, promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare, compatibility with the immediate vicinity. The next one, I don't have anything bolded, because that it follows the lot lines. And then there's no significant adverse impacts on the natural environment, including the air-water noise, stormwater management, et cetera. And then that there's no special treatment that's given to a particular property that is not available to a similar property. So, that's, those are some of the items that highlight, are highlighted as a standard of review for a map amendment. And as a quick review, what is a zoning overlay? Again, it's that mainland that we have, so we have our city land. It's divided by the zoning districts, all the colorful, even the map next to the screen shows the colorful map. And then the overlay is just an added blanket over those zoning districts that then identify and create extra uses, protect environment, however the overlay district is designed. So, currently, we have the Design Control District that is mapped, which you're very much familiar with, also known as the Historic District in our city. That has, in fact, design criteria for buildings to meet standards. There's a guidebook that is created for that. So, now we have multiple overlay districts in our zoning code that we are introducing. And again, you're so familiar with this, because you were involved in our pre-meetings. Now, we're introducing the West Avenue overlay and the Neighborhood Center overlay. So, as a review again, why pursue the West Avenue overlay? I feel like I'm preaching to the choir, because you've all been to our meetings. West Avenue was specifically referenced in the 2017 Comprehensive Plan. What's interesting is that, at that time, the planners had already seen that there was not enough commercial vacant land, or that the parcels that have existing commercial uses, they're kind of, they're used, they're older, they need updated, and maybe they're not as competitive as the newer structures that are being constructed. Second highest traffic volume. Having an overlay, it would create a more uniform approach. I think we all agree that when you're driving down West Avenue, it could have, it could have some design improvements, maybe more a friendlier, vibrant area. And then increased accessibility with walkability. We'd love to see that. And then the benefits, just going to leave this up for a little bit, because we've talked about this over and over again, what the overlay district on West Avenue, what it could offer. So, in the past, now, we've had, in 2021, we adopted the zoning code, which listed the overlay districts. We had three meetings. And then today, we have our joint session, of course. And then December 5th, we will have our first introduction before the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they will review and make a recommendation to City Council, and then ordinance will be introduced. To, one, map the overlays, two, for, to adopt the zoning code text that goes along with those overlays, as well as recognize that we now will have design guidebooks that go with those overlays, that help our Architectural Review Board make their decisions. So, in summary of the previous meetings, the overall consensus was support. There were concerns for unintended consequences of any future development, but overall, there was support. And the next couple of slides, I just wanted to share with you are surveys that we received back from our meetings, as well as our website. They were dropped off. So, this was a kind of a culmination of that. So, overall, how supportive are you of the mixed-use district as proposed? Fifty-two people responded. Forty-seven were unique responses. Some people responded with their little table, the feedback form, and some had submitted on the website or in person. But interesting numbers. So, here, you can see 83% truly are not opposed to this. This is how do you feel about the proposed residential mixed-use being introduced? Eighty percent are not opposed. This was a what features contribute to an inviting community? This kind of gives us some feedback on possibly the design standards that we'd introduce into the overlays. So, very interesting that landscaping trees, it's very important, lighting, the light pollution, architectural features, and then it goes down a little bit, but interesting, interesting numbers. So, again, this is the area, and I apologize, the graphic cut off, but Justin Delaney and our IT department has done a fantastic job in providing these maps, and they're so clear. And you have copies in your packets that I'll explain in a little bit what they are. But the green outline, as Mayor Kilway had stated, is the proposed mapped area, so any parcel that touches West Avenue. So, now, we're talking about residential use. There was a lot of discussion about this. The West Avenue overlay does not include residential use. But during our meetings and the surveys and in-person meetings here at City Hall, there was an overwhelming desire to have residential use be introduced in this area. So, we do recognize that residential use on West Avenue might not be the most optimum solution, but there were a lot of good reasons why it should be included. So, I've listed some of them here. Business attraction, the aging of our community, the requirement for heads-on-beds to support retail and the residential consumer uses. And then, more specifically, which was the neighboring response on Nottingham, is to create a buffer between the existing residential and commercial areas. So, especially in that one parcel there, the Rocco's Plaza, is such a deep lot that in the back, it is more for residential, would make sense as a buffer, so that they don't have commercial uses in their backyard, even though it's zoned commercial. So, we have this Neighborhood Center overlay, which is then what we have introduced to provide that residential use and provide that mix onto the West Avenue area. And just so that when we get to the map, so you understand, our intent all this time was to create Neighborhood Center overlays as transition zones between the residential and the commercial. And we had already thought Northwest Avenue, Northeast Avenue, you know, the spokes off the circle are great opportunities for the residential mix, bring the consumers back and the residents back to the center of town. So, here is a map of what we intended then to include as the Neighborhood Center overlay, the transition area. And I'm going to just zoom in, because you'll see a dotted line there. The way that we can map anything on GIS or without doing our surveys, by going along parcel lines. But by preferring not to put residential off right on West Avenue, in the zoning code text, we included a requirement that residential, the residential setback be 250 feet from the center line back, which kind of carries it to the back of some of these buildings. So, keep that in mind as you're looking at that map and at the zoning code text. So, quickly to review what I have in your Manila folder that was in front of you. So, there are four text amendments that pertain to this mapping of the overlays. One of them is a certificate of appropriateness in 1102.19.1, which is an administrative part. It's so that our Architectural Review Board knows how to review the applications. Point 1, 1103.14 is the Neighborhood Center Overlay District. It was very bare, because we didn't have the ideas of what we wanted it to look like, so that was updated. Same with the West Avenue Overlay District in 1103.16. 1103.29 is the typologies. It's a high-transition zone. That is a section that we had to help create a transition between residential and commercial or industrial areas, create a buffer, a natural flow of an elevation of a building. So, strengthen that a little bit more by creating a larger transition zone. A change to Appendix B in the zoning code to add the two overlay maps. And then I included the two drafts of the guidebooks for the West Avenue Overlay District and the Neighborhood Center Overlay District. So, that's kind of the planning and zoning part of this section. We have Sean Joyce with us. He is going to just address the economic impact.
All right, well, thank you for having us here today, and thanks for everyone in attendance. Yeah, I think from an economic development standpoint, this is kind of an exciting time to see this kind of collaborative effort all come together, obviously stemming back from, you know, the original master plan, and of course, the obvious corridor that's before us, which is West Avenue. We've been fortunate that the Rocco property, for instance, we have a cooperative property owner that really is trying to hold out and do what he thinks, what we think, might be best for the city. There's been a number of opportunities that's come to him to, you know, do easy, quick sale, you know, of property and build something like a megachurch or something like that. But most recently, and some of this is really being reinforced with this vision, there's been a number of developers that have approached him about doing some kind of multi-use residential combined with, you know, commercial-retail type of development. And what's driving them is really the research they're doing. It really is coming across the state, this shortage of, you know, affordable, you know, market housing that's maintenance-free, that is rental instead of homeownership. There's just this trend, whether it's seniors trying to downsize into a maintenance-free space, or, you know, the newer professionals that aren't looking to have, you know, mortgage property, they're preferring the maintenance-free, high-end rental type of spaces. So, they've shared some of the research with us, and it's pretty, it's pretty interesting what's happening here in Talmadge. One of the things is, of course, the high demand for rental housing. So, one of the things they're looking at is, you know, what is the rental inventory in the city and how much of it's occupied? And it's an extremely high percentage here in Talmadge that's occupied of the rental space, 97% occupancy rate on current rental property here in Talmadge. And adding to that, in the last five years, there's only, five years, there's only been 140 new rental units added to the total inventory. So, you know, that combined with what we know and hear about is the changing demographics in our community is creating a demand that they think is there, and that's why there's so much interest in doing a property like this, a development. Some of the demographics, we talked about, growth in older households, and we've all heard the stories, we're seeing across the state, the 65 and over population is the fastest-growing population, really not only in the U.S., but actually across the whole globe. And so, the shortage of housing that seniors can downsize from and get out of these homes and properties that they own, that they can no longer really maintain. They might be able to afford them, but maintenance and accessibility for them as they age is becoming problematic. Here in Talmadge, that population is expected to increase 21% in the next five years. Let me think about that. That's a huge jump, just in your population here in Talmadge. And those folks generally love Talmadge. They want to stay in Talmadge. They want to be near the rest of their family, that's probably here in Talmadge. But they need options to go to for the next stage of life. We all know, too, that the population is living longer, because the second fastest-growing population in the country is 80 and over. So, those are all putting pressure. Also, the increasing middle-aged demographic. So, in the middle of that, there's growth happening in the 35 to 44-year-old segment, and that's expected to increase almost 5% in the next five years. So, and that population is driven towards these types of properties. Those are who we're seeing renting up these higher-end homes. And of course, the economic impact of those things, you know, we talked about what's the current businesses that are on West Avenue right now. If you look at it, there's a perfect mix of amenities right now on West Avenue in this section we're talking about, across from the Rocco's property. You've got Petites, you've got grocers like Giant Eagle, Seven Grains, you've got services like White Swan, you know, dry cleaning and others. You've got restaurants, right? And then everything's not far from the circle, where there's other amenities right there. So, you know, a development that's going to also infuse new population up against, by the way, a neighborhood that's right there as well, and create that buffer that we heard about earlier. And accessible and new amenities that possibly you could be strategic about and fill in the gaps of things that may be missing, or maybe it's, you know, that flashy new destination type of amenity that will draw people and also from other communities. There's an opportunity to do that and be planful. And we know, again, the current property owner really wants to kind of collaborate with the city, which is great. The other part is, you know, obviously, the new retail that could come, and also the new business, too, the Giant Eagle and Seven Grains, it's just going to infuse revenue, because it infuses opportunities with increased tax and sales revenues, and allow those businesses also maybe to reinvest in those properties, and maybe those that haven't liked Petites lean into this overlay concept. And really, a development project like this would ignite other developments, we try to go down the corridor, which is key, right? I was involved in Coggo Falls Front Street work, and it was slow at first, but once you got those key owners to invest in their properties, it just took off. Everyone wanted to be part of it. And I think that's the opportunity that could happen here. Also, you know, lending into, you know, kind of affordability to developments like this, you know, these are, these are rent, monthly rents are like $2,000, $2,500 a month. So, it's not low-income housing, for sure. The income growth in the population is renting these units is expecting to go up another 13% in the next five years. So, they're seeing growth in their income, which is creating opportunity for them to spend and invest in properties like this. And again, you know, increased spending dollars for them to put into the businesses that are surrounding these developments, which is key, which is what we all want to see. And then the attractive site and amenities, so, you know, the plans for these developments that create really something that's eye-catching, something that people want to be around, be in, be living in, be, you know, come visiting and using amenities for. So, we're talking about, hopefully, you know, high-end, you know, really attractive-looking features, these buildings, which will lean into the vision of the overlay, creating this kind of beautification project going all the way down the corridor, and creating that accessibility. that accessibility for their surrounding community. So even the neighbors, you know, behind a development like this, our hope would be working with the planners and the developers to tie in the neighborhood to these resources, create something that maybe could attach to neighbors they could walk to instead of having to come down a busy main street like West Avenue. So there's a lot of opportunities. And the other part of the infrastructure that's right there too is, you already have plenty of public transportation on West Avenue. So even those that want to come in and, and, you know, be part of the new development, the new, the new energy of Talmadge can benefit as well, which will help businesses. So, so it's a lot of good data. It's a pretty thick report. There's a lot more. But again, all these things lean into this opportunity. And I think we have a vision of what this, Lisa. So we have been given a concept of what this might look like and all this is very rough, but you can see kind of how the overlay feature with the retail and commercial property up front. I think there's about 32,000 square feet of retail and commercial use there. And going back into the residential area, which is, as Helene mentioned, a far enough setback away from the street that, you know, they've got the quiet and other components you want to be in as far as a living space. And of course, I think it looks like Tetris right now, but there'll be, you know, the beautification, the green spaces, I mean, and whoever the developer is, is, this is what we would want to see happen. You can really see the depth of the acreage in this property alone. So, you know, one of the challenges with trying to keep it as all commercial use, there's a lot of acres there to try to fill and sustain with businesses. So this would actually help both sides of it. Create amenities for those that will live there, infuse population to take advantage of those amenities and support the businesses, not only on the site, but surrounding, surrounding the site and hopefully draw in other investment, other businesses that want to be close to this. That would be kind of the ignition that you'd want. Any questions? All right, time to say then.
So if I, if I may, I just wanted to share that we have received quite a few inquiries for that property in our zoning department. The other area that we've really received a lot of inquiries about is this vacant land on Northwest Avenue. So I wanted to just point that out. A lot of inquiries on this one, so a lot of inquiries over here. And then the A&W site, we're getting a lot of requests, but just no success if we're trying. But just so that you're aware, there's just a lot of developers that would like to come in and they all come in with the same vision that we have, that we'd like to see here as, as was presented to you tonight. But we are free for questions if you have any questions and, or would like to relook at slides or see other stuff or have questions.
Mr. Bowser.
Yes, Councilwoman, got my, go ahead. We just start probably down there at that end and work our way down. I think that's the most efficient way.
Well, thank you all for the presentation. That was really informative and it's exciting to see the possibilities. I just had a rather specific question about the building height for the residential overlay, neighborhood overlay of the two stories. From the interest that you've seen, is that going to be sufficient for the developers, the two stories, or do you think that might limit who we bring in?
Trying to gather my thoughts here. So the, so what you're referring to is the zoning code text 1103.14. There's the building height. It's, the max is 24 feet, two stories. The reason we limited it to two stories is because we see it as a transition area between what probably is single-story next to commercial or by industrial. So if you can see that, visualize that, that you probably wouldn't want a three- or four-story building that really doesn't transition. Now, if you are in a situation where it would be in a transition area where that would work, the Planning and Zoning Commission would have the power to grant them a variance. But at least this way, there is some standards that are reviewed, whether or not it works with the variance standards, you know, that whether it's, it's a, whether they have a hardship to bring it down or whether it meets the intent of the code or, you know, whether it meets the residential feel that as a transition area. I hope that answers your question.
It provides some background, thank you.
I think my, my little concern is the noise factor for the neighbors. And it's also been brought up to me about the animals in the area as well. Because they do have quite a bit of animals, deers, raccoons. That's been brought up to me, that they're very concerned about that. I don't think we can go in there and move them, but it is something that we need to take into consideration and stuff. But my big thing is the noise issue for the, the people behind there that are going to be living there. If there's somehow, it can be built so, you know, maybe that would be the back part of the garages or something, so there's no noise going from all those apartments and people and businesses with the noise for the people that are there already. I think it's good that you guys talked about where they can actually come over and, you know, go to different stores or something like that so they could be, you know, pathways. I think that would be very beneficial and give them a reason that they would want, would want that in there. So, just my thoughts. Thank you.
So, do you want me to address?
Sure.
Address that? Okay. So again, I just put up this, this concept plan because in all actuality, in the past year, very similar concept plans were submitted to us. And I would like to share with you that in our requirements for these developments, we would require buffering to be done and noise impacts to be, you know, noise-reducing, what's the word, to reduce the noise impact by probably adding landscaping or, you know, whatever is necessary. That would all go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and they would be asked to review all that. And we would require that as well. And then in the guidebook that is drafted that's in your packet, when you have free time and you, it's a fun read, it does have, it does address some of those concerns as well. Now, as for animals, they're everywhere. They're in my backyard too. I, they're everywhere. This is a property that is owned by a property owner as, and I'm only using this as an example. It would be for any vacant property. It's going to happen. They, they should have the right to develop. Maybe they, the animals will find another area.
If I can just add, add on to kind of that concept, is that, I think as we're reviewing this, we have to keep in mind that although we're thinking of properties that may not have something on it right now, they are already zoned commercial. So the idea that there could be a neighborhood overlay would be that, again, that concept of a residential next to residential where there is that transition to the commercial. So, so we have to, it's not the choice, it's like a false choice to think that the choice is do nothing or, or potentially this. The choice is actually the commercial and what the commercial regulations are or do this. That's the choice. So just kind of keep that in mind, so, as we're thinking about it.
And if I could also add too, you know, as you know, we've had community engagement meetings on the whole overlay. And this was brought to us by the people that live in those, in that residence, surrounding it. They're the ones literally that came to my office and they're like, we've got together, we talked, we want, we don't want a commercial building in our backyard. Here's our idea. We want, can you put single-family homes behind us as a buffer zone? And we were like all smiles because, well, that's kind of where we're going down the road. So they're very much in favor of something like this because it does give them that quiet residential feel in their backyard. Instead of a big, you know, commercial building, it could be, you know, an Amazon building back there, which would not be, you know, they'd have a 30-foot-high, you know, cinderblock wall in their backyard as opposed to a, a single-family, single-story residential.
I'm trying to picture what you guys are sort of planning back there. Is, is that like meant to be similar to like the condos for Baker's Acres? Or is that made to be more like a Hunter's Lake? I just use those as examples in the general area. I mean, are they two-story townhomes or is there a family up, a family down?
Well, I think in this concept.
I'm sorry.
There you go. I think in this concept, again, it's pretty basic blocks over here, but the yellow section are those kind of cluster, single-family, one-story units, right? The blue are more of a townhome, you know, row house, like side-by-side, multi-store, you know, a little bit more high, two-story transition area. And then of course, the red is your commercial retail services. So I think the plan is though, from a visual standpoint, you're kind of stepping, you're progressing backwards to having your own place, you know, your own separate plot there. So hopefully you would see maybe your, your younger professionals might draw to your townhome kind of setup at the beginning. And then the hopes is as they develop, maybe they move into that next unit. So you have a mix of professionals, seniors, so it's really supposed to create a community within. So there's, there's multiple options within the same footprint.
It, it looks like, at least in this example, that obviously between the blue and the yellow that there's significantly more residential than commercial that is being planned. Is that the goal in your opinion or Mayor, in your opinion, for that West Avenue overlay? Are we trying to just, a little bit of business on the road front and layers of residential back?
Well, as, as was stated with the Neighborhood Center overlay, the, the residential cannot start until 250 feet setback. So the first 250 feet right along that front line there would be your commercial. And then anything behind that would be the residential mixed use. Now, it could also be where the, the two-story units were, the blue stories, that could be additional office space. You know, it, it could be your, your true mixed use where you could have some residential, some office space in there as well too. If you look on South Avenue where the Grand Woodlands are, they, they have that building in the front. It's a two-story and it's, most of those are office buildings. And then you have your residential in the back. But these would be very upscale concierge-type amenities. They would have event space. Things that your young professionals are wanting nowadays. They're, they're demanding high finishes. They're demanding, you know, like I said, upscale amenities. And we're talking $2,000, $2,500 rent is what we're looking at and up.
How do we ensure that that's what ends, it ends up being? I mean, anything could be developed right now with a certain intention and then turn into something different, I guess. How would we be able to ensure that these remain used as intended or rented as intended use?
That would be spelled out in your Neighborhood Center overlay.
So there's, so there's regulations that would be applicable to each actual development. So again, keep in mind, this is just general concepts. This is not you guys deciding on this, this. So they, they would have to be a whole application process. They would, the applicant would have to go through the vetting of planning and zoning and council. There would be conditions. There's the ordinance that we have. They have to submit the general development plan with all these details delineated as to, you know, what it's, what the layout is, what it looks like, all those things. And different conditions can be placed upon it. So that's how we do any other development. It's the same, it's the same thought process of any, of any of our developments that go through.
Is the goal, and I'll just, since this property's up, I'll use it as an example, is the goal to get more units in or to possibly add more green space? I'm honestly surprised there's not some sort of green space in there more. It just looks kind of compact. And again, I know that's a very rough rendering and a what-if situation. Just, just wondering what the goal is there, whether it's to pack more families in there or to pack, or to make it a little bit more flowy? Because either could serve a purpose, I guess.
So again, the details for the actual overlay district would be delineated in the text of the overlay district. So you need to look there. Again, this is just a very basic, generic concept without any actual engineering or anything like that. So you would have to look at the text of the, of that to see what the, what the green space is, et cetera. But again, keep in mind that this is a transition zone. So it is, it is intended to be a higher density than the R1, R2, R3, R4 because it's a transition. So it's meant to have this kind of mixed-use feel, take you from commercial into, you know, the other types of residential that we already have. And again, keep in mind that the property currently is on commercial.
And if I may too, so we don't really want to get hung up on this concept plan because this is definitely just blocks on a piece of paper. The idea that commercial is at the West Avenue level and then showing a transition of housing or, as was mentioned, the blue blocks that they would be a mixed use where there's, you know, maybe there's some salon back there or, you know, think about residential uses that are commercial that would be in there. I, I think the intent for this developer was to provide open space. I think in the middle between the yellow and the blue, they had some event space and green space. And then I know that they were talking about some trails and stuff like that. So once you get that plan, then you see it more. But the idea is that the commercial would be at West Avenue and then that transition zone would then fall behind. And it could be intermixed. The, a developer could come in and say, hey, I'm going to put over and I'll buy this green space. I'm going to put more stores back there, but I'm going to put housing in the middle. So I mean, that's just a con.
Yeah, I understand. It's completely rough. I, I just was wondering whether it be the administration or planning, planning and zoning, what, what's your vision? What's the goal currently in your guys' eyes? And it may be slightly different between the two or it might be very similar. You know, I'm not sure. I just was wondering what the goal was.
The goal is to revitalize West Avenue.
Yeah.
And to provide more amenities for the existing businesses that are there, to give them, you know, give people a reason to go to West Avenue and visit the existing businesses.
Yeah, I understand the overall, overall goal.
Yeah, that's, the overall goal for this whole thing is to revitalize West Avenue.
Yeah, I understand that. I was talking about the layout of things is not as much as the overall goal. I understand and I'm completely understanding of that. I was just, you know, are you, what's the vision, I guess? You know, this is obviously just blocks and a rough overlay.
Yeah, we can't control like whether it's going to be families.
Yeah, we can't control, like, whether it's gonna be families living back there, or whether it's going to be, you know, young professionals. We can't control that. But we do have, um, information on what the trends are. And the trends on this type of a lifestyle are your fifty-five and up, you know, kid, empty nusters that don't want to take care of a yard anymore. Um, my sister falls into that a hundred percent, her daughter's in college, they went into, um, a very nice unit, um, a couple years ago, thinking it was gonna be transition as they sold their big house and they're trying to find something else, and they love it. They love being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, my dishwasher's not working, and someone comes out that day and fixes it, instead of them having, so they call a management company, instead of them having to try to find somebody to fix their appliances. Um, and these are, they're, they're gorgeous units, they really are. So there's the fifty-five and up, there's, um, the young professionals, there's the, you know, the seniors that, you know, they want one-floor living because doing stairs is hard for them. There's a number of people that really want this type of a housing market, and we don't have it for them.
Yeah, I understand. Like I said, I, I was just wondering if the dense, the density of it, if that's what you guys were envisioning, or possibly something different.
Okay, and, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, and I think, too, what we've seen, um, too, and it's hard to get from that scale of, of drawing, but, um, you know, all these developments attract, there's gotta be components of recreation within them. There's gotta be trails, bike paths, and we're gonna want that anyways, to get people easily to the front amenities or any of the other businesses. So I think, I think the plan, work with the developer, will be to encourage, I mean, don't forget, they gotta, you know, they gotta do things that are gonna attract people to want to live here, versus somewhere else. So incorporating those green activity areas within this development will be key. And obviously, you know, those yellow units are all gonna be separate uni- separate houses, so they're not gonna be connected like it might look like there, but, so there'll be landscaping, everything else around the houses as well, really making it a community, so, um, but, as the Mayor said, I think, whatever development might be the model, as that progresses into more details, there'll be a lot more to share, kind of, what that's gonna look like before, I would imagine, anything's, you know, go.
Thank you.
Um, I have to go next, I'm sorry. I have so many questions today. They're bursting out at me right now. So, I, as, as I'm looking at this, um, we have a number of parcels all the way up and down West Avenue, and a number of separate owners of all of those parcels. So, what I see an issue with this would be, every parcel owner might decide, well, my property is better suited to have a large warehouse for, you know, X, Y, Z company. So they pu- put that in. Well, right next door, they decide, well, we want to do the commercial in the front, residential in the back. How are we going to put any kind of parameter on that to help control it? Because we're basically... It doesn't give us much authority or say-so in how we make a very, um, smooth transition of everything. If we want everything to look a certain way, and for it to kind of look seamless in not pieced together, I understand the concept, I, I like the concept, but I also feel that if we're gonna do the two-hundred-and-fifty setback, that's, the bulk of this is really talking about a neighborhood overlay, more so than it is a commercial, because the commercial's already there, it exists. People can put whatever they want in there, a- as long as it meets those codes. So what we're really talking about today is the neighborhood overlay, more than anything. And I think that is what we're going to come across an issue on, is you're going to end up with two-hundred-and-fifty-feet commercial space in the front, within maybe apartments on this one parcel. And then, two parcels down, you're going to have ten single-family homes. It's going to be very, um, mismatched, because each parcel owner is going to have their kind of say on how they want to develop their own property.
And I think that's why we have the design, um, let me get the, the... Sorry, my fingers aren't working. That's why you have your design guidebooks, 'cause that will help distinguish that as well. So, as, as it goes forward, so this is just the planning and the building blocks for future development. We're not gonna see this in, happen in the next year, five years, ten years. This is to plan the future of West Avenue down the next twenty years. This is not gonna be fast at all, but this is just getting these overlays on the map so that future development, twenty years down the road...
Right. And I understand that, I, I think that there, there needs to be a, a, when you plan something like this, even if it is a twenty-years-out type plan, you have to consider that, if you're saying it's gonna be a slow process, well, that process is gonna become very mismatched over time. And you're going to have areas that are developed commercially with residential in the back, and areas where it's going to be all commercial.
Correct, yes.
So, and, and I'm not saying that that's bad or good, I just, I think that is going against what our revitalizing is. I don't, I don't see that as being revitalized, I see that as basically a way to add additional housing to an area that should, or should not have it. I mean, it's, I, I think Mr. Roy wants to add something.
I guess I'm, I'm looking at all the...
You put your mic on.
What Cogga Falls and Kent did, if you look at, you know, he knows on Front Street there, it's, now it's moving towards North Akron, what they're doing, but, you, I think what they're saying is, you built something like this, if I got a warehouse or whatever, heck, somebody's gonna come and say, I wanna buy your property 'cause I wanna invest, and then you get something new. And then, and it just kind of spreads. That's what you're seeing in Cogga Falls, it was all Front Street, now they're going farther towards North Akron, they're knocking down buildings, they're putting up an apartment complex. So I think you gotta kind of get the seed in there first, and then more things are gonna develop, because those people's properties are gonna be worth more money if all this is going in, and other businesses besides car dealerships are probably gonna wanna come in there. So I think you gotta kind of plant the seed, and that's what this is doing. And like I said, when you look at Cogga Falls in Kent, everything is growing. I don't see a lot of old buildings in Kent no more, and I know Cogga Falls has knocked them down, but that's, again, that's just what I'm seeing, uh, that kind of answers your question. I think it'll kind of get the ball rolling.
And, and as you can see also, the Neighborhood Center, it is just on the north side of West Avenue with that small parcel that's right there around the circle. So the neighbor, we, we are limiting it to where it is buffered up against neighborhoods, which is the whole, um, the whole premise of a neighborhood overlay is to have it coexist with existing neighbors. So we're trying to do smart planning and smart development, is what this is.
And I, and I completely understand that, I just, again, if you have one parcel owner, like, for example, where Kendah Tire's, uh, facility is at, if you have one owner that decides this is how they see fit to use their property, is to put a giant warehouse in, and then we're gonna build housing o- out, around that, I don't see that as being a very clear, consistent vision for West Avenue. I completely understand what we're trying to do on revitalizing it, but I don't see that as it being consistent, because we have so many different owners up and down West Avenue, I'm sure they're all gonna differ on what they feel their property could be utilized for. The other, uh, thing I wanted to mention was...
Can I, before you go on, can I just address your concern as well? Um, I understand that you are, that you're concerned about the, this way of revitalizing West Avenue, but this does revitalize West Avenue. You're, you refer to Kendah Tire, the warehouse. Yes, it's an eyesore right now, but if it em- it empties, because Kendah is moving to the, the Jet area, somebody else could revitalize that. And if they use it as a warehouse, so be it, but they have to conform to our zoning code. If they make changes over sixty percent, they have to make changes to our design guidelines that, that go along with those design guidelines. We're asking people that when they renovate and when they add on, that they comply with those design guidelines, so that there is consistency. And other business owners now can understand that, hey, I'm not gonna be so worried about my neighbor, because they are gonna have to conform also to these design guidelines. And that is the direction that we're going into, and it may be a ten-year project, but we need to start somewhere, and we need to bring that into, into being here, and we need to start introducing it. And we're not just focusing on residential, we're focusing on revitalizing West Avenue, and that's why we have, we focus first on this West Avenue overlay that goes all the way over, that includes Midway Plaza, all the way to the circle, to create a, a more vibrant Talmadge Avenue. So I think revitalizing, this is the tool to do that, it's just, it takes time. We can't ask our parcel owners, our property owners, to just make changes. But when they do, we will require them to go along with the design guidelines that are being, that are in draft form in front of you, and hopefully you accept those.
Right. And I understand that. I, I guess my, one of my other questions, um, is, you know, we're talking about high, high-income housing, or, or high-income, uh, owners or residents. I guess, knowing kind of what we were talking about with the housing and, and the different types, are we, and I, and forgive me, I didn't have a chance to find it yet, but are we specifically citing this is the type of, you know, we want R3-type housing only, we want R4, or... Are we calling out a specific type of housing, where we leaving it open, and then, as they put it in application, we can either approve it or not approve it?
So per our code, we allow, um, single-family detached townhouses, multifamily, single-family attached, as well as a mixed-use. So that is, has been in our code, in the zoning code, and that is what we are continuing on in the Neighborhood Center overlay for residential uses.
Okay, so, it varies.
And if we put, what, some of the planning and zoning commissions ask their questions...
Yes, yeah, we have a couple, a couple more questions, if, if you can. Um, I know, so, maximum number of housing, basically, is going to be determined by what type it is they're putting in, 'cause they're gonna have to abide by, if it's R3, or R6, or not R6, I'm sorry, R3 or R2, here's the base square footage they're going to have for that property. So we're gonna branch these off to individual parcels, then, and sell those parcels, or we're only going to make them a, um, rental-only, basically?
No, um, Mr. Bowles, it would be under the neighborhood, so you have to look at that code text and what those requirements...
I understand, but what I'm saying is, there, there will be no individual owners of those housing, any, any type of housing you have, or they all gonna be renters.
It all depends on what the developer decides, what they wanna do.
And that's, that, that's what I'm getting to, is, so again, we're gonna have separate parcel owners up and down West Avenue, and then we're going to include housing in the back, which may or may not be separate owners.
I think you can contemplate that as a transition zone with attached family houses and townhomes and things, there probably will be a lot of rental units that will be part of that.
And then, my last question, with, with these overlays, do we consider, um, the impact on either one city services or the infrastructure costs to put in some of these, um, housing mainly?
That is typically the responsibility of the developer, whoever the developer is, has to put in the infrastructure into the development, so they pay for the cost of that.
But there's essentially a cost to us in doing that, in the long term, correct?
Well, the cost is typically on the developer to put that infrastructure in, so, other than utilization...
Providing services costs the city.
Right, but hopefully there's revenue to provide those services, from the utilities being generated on the properties, as well as the taxes coming from whatever is happening on those properties.
So did we look at that at all? As just a base, if, if this property develops and puts in a hundred homes, here's what the cost will be for the city.
Well, I think typically, what I've seen is, you know, the, the city and departments has those developers come forward with their plans, contemplate whether, what would we need to support that development as they come forward, based on how many units are gonna go in there, what the planning and zoning agrees should be there as far as that development itself. I would also say, I would not forget that, as far as developers go, you know, working with developers, you know, they're, typically, they're trying to make the right investment that is gonna work for them, right? It's gonna be successful. So, you know, as we look at the unknowns of not knowing what's coming next, like, after this development, um, developers wanna see what's working in the area and see how they can lean in to that strategy to work for them. Unless they see a gap and a need that's gonna be a demand for their type of development, separate from what's happening already, and that's what they bring forward, and then, again, you know, the city and planning and zoning consider what that developer is bringing forward, and, and question how that developer thinks that fits or works.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna defer to Councilman Bowles.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll be quick. My biggest concern, uh, first of all, thank you for the presentation, I really appreciate everyone's time and efforts on this. My concern is around the Neighborhood Center overlay. I'm trying to think broadly, um, at the entire city. You know, we have pending litigation out of Ward Two, we have a potential, um, you know, growth in terms of, uh, application in Ward Three, and then now we have this. And I don't have a crystal ball, but we have a, we have a chance to, as a council and planning and zoning, to really look at the velocity of growth when it comes to residential, and what's smart for the city as a whole. And the pace, if we're not careful, can get very out of hand quickly between this and a lot of unknowns that are floating around out there. So, I, I fully support commercial, uh, industrial, you know, the retail, uh, those mixed uses, but when it comes to residential specifically in this area, I have a lot of concerns, and putting it more broadly, the timing of it all, between this expanding and residential potentially on top of additional, additional residential expansion across the other wards, you could have, you could have, uh, you could have a real problem. So, those are, that's my concern. Again, I, I, I support the, the, the commercial and retail aspect of it, I think it's, that's good, but we really gotta look at the residential and just learn from history, and just be careful with the pace of things. Thank you.
I like your comment, Mr. Bowles, about, um, learning from history. One of the developments that stands out in my mind, I want to make sure that, and I believe that we have, is, uh, learning from the Town Center development. I'm terrible with directions, but it's around here. Thank you. Um, and learning from that. So one of the things I'm noting is, like, putting, you know, on the street where we have fifty thousand cars a day coming by, that's where our main commercial space is. That's what we were missing. One of the things that I think, I don't wanna say went wrong, but could've gone differently, maybe, with Town Center, right? So definitely learning from history, I agree with that. And, you know, there, there are other considerations in the city, but, you know, we're, we can't ignore the fact that we're also going through the strategic plan, and we're gathering a lot of feedback there. And I feel like what I'm hearing from the Strategic Planning Committee is, people are open to it in the right areas. open to it in the right areas. And I don't want to ignore the, like, specifically the people on Nottingham and West Overdale would be impacted the most by commercial development versus a residential development. So I don't want to ignore those people by saying "commercial only." It would, if I had a big warehouse in my backyard versus townhomes, I, of course, see where they're coming from. I'm going to pick townhomes or apartments or multifamily living to give it, I think we need that transition area. And I think there was a lot of good points that you all made, but also I'm hearing from residents, from Strategic Planning Commission, people are open to it. It just, we don't have a crystal ball, like you say. We have to do it the right way. I did have one question. If there was, like, a specific inspiration, design district that you all looked to when writing this up, that would speak to the type of character that we're looking to create with this revitalization?
So I included some inspirations in the guidebook that was drafted. So in the back of it, there are pages with inspirations of where these ideas came from and where, what we would like to see. So you can see the pictures there. It was not really a specific neighborhood. This is a general concept plan that is throughout the country. It's happening everywhere. So we just want to make it fit our city so that it, that's why it's been customized.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to any members of Planning and Zoning that'd like to have a question.
In the interest of time, I'll, I'll make this brief. I have experience with a pretty progressive developer, which gave me the opportunity to have some experience with some other progressive developers that I met over the course of my career with that. I have no questions regarding this. I see it as nothing but a huge advantage to the city. Yes, there are some concerns and some things that are going to be, again, a little more, if I'll use that word again, progressive, and therefore will meet with some feat, or, you know, pushback, I'm sure. But I see us getting through all of those things. The big thing with West Avenue, as every real estate agent will say, location, location, location. And that has been an issue with maybe some of the other developments that were referenced here tonight. In addition, this, this property, the way, and I'm looking at it and thinking, if I was a developer, there are only a few parcels there that I would probably consider for a neighborhood behind my commercial property, but, you know, certainly there are some there. The thing I'd like to point out, and I apologize for my voice, I don't know what's going on today. I think we have to give a great deal of credit to developers and, on Planning and Zoning, and you as council members have seen that as well. They will propose developments based on, first of all, a great deal of time, effort, and resources invested in making sure that that development is something that will be successful for them. And unfortunately, I worked for a developer who had some that maybe weren't so successful, but when you build a high-end rental property or even condo property and you finish it in 2008, you're probably going to have a problem. So timing is the other part of this. And this is a slow process, and I think we will see a lot of different things come before us, based on, again, the fact that this is a great location, the timing as far as what the economy is doing at that particular time, what trends are, and so on. And so it will be a slow process, but I'd like to give credit to the developer, for developers, for what time and effort and resources they put into bringing these projects to us. And then thankfully, with these kinds of things in place, we have the ability to, you know, tweak them to what we feel is appropriate for this particular city and, you know, what our visions are. So that's, again, I'll cut it off there, so we can move on. Anybody else?
I would just like to say that, listen to Mrs. Oliver. I agree 100%. I think, I think we got down into the weeds. This is just a concept. I mean, there's going to be a lot of tweaks and everything else that will be done to this, probably before it's approved, and then after it's approved, whatever case, whatever form it's in. But then when it comes to planning and zoning, there's going to be more tweaks, because it happens every time, somebody comes in and needs this adjusted or that adjusted. I think we need to look at it as a concept and agree on the concept and then move on from there.
Yeah, if I could, I just want to reference one, one thing I left out, it was someone mentioned about the concern about too much grow too quickly, and we totally get that. Again, to the point of development, developers will look at that as too, because all do their own market feasibility. I should be speaking. It's hard for me to look backwards, sorry about that. They're all going to look at, they will all look at feasibility for their properties, because that pre-work is, it could be $100,000 of investment for them, not knowing they actually have a development. But one of the things that came on the market study as well is, from 2020 to 24, Talmadge actually saw a decrease in population, about almost 2%. So, you know, we, you know, this type of opportunity is a way to kind of hopefully infuse, you know, new growth in the population as well, which can only help businesses, again, manage correctly. I mean, we know, we don't want to overburden our resources as well, but, you know, with population dropping, again, the concern is, why is that happening? You know, was it people that wanted to stay in Talmadge and they just didn't have options? Is there other areas who are just drawing people away because of other amenities and opportunities? We don't know that, but, but that is something, again, this would help try to hopefully turn that tide.
I'd just like to add that, you know, as mentioned earlier, there's no crystal balls, but there's a lot in front of all of us that's quite easy to see. I don't get to travel a great deal, but when you go to any other cities, the Riverwalks, all the developments that happen inner-city, it's, it's obvious, it's just a booming piece. And talking to neighbors, friends, relatives, all that I hear for a number of years is, what's wrong with Talmadge as far as development? Look at Kent, look at Cogge Falls, look at everybody around us. When we go out, we go to those areas. And here's the opportunity for this group, for us, to get that all started. It's got to start someplace. And that mixture is what you're seeing happen everywhere else, so I think it's the right time.
I think my commission members have kind of put everything.
Mr. Rohr looks eager to speak.
I just wanted to say something. I don't know if this is on or not, but I think Councilman Boles, or, no, Bozick brought up about putting stress on city services. Most of that stuff should be private in there. The roadway should be private, the water lines. I mean, a great example, the water line that runs through here with the fire hydrants behind us, this development, that's not ours, that's private. We don't do anything with it. They tap in off of our mains, we don't plow those roads. Same way with, if you think about the Carol Martin Plaza, that's a cut through, through the Pioneer Physician. I mean, we don't plow it, those are private water lines. I mean, so it won't put any, it should be a revenue source for us, because we're selling more water, more sanitary sewers, so it should be that way. It's an enterprise issue, really. Just want to clarify.
And that is a good point, and that's part, I'll say, half of our city services. Our other city services would be our police, fire, and our parks and recreation, which I think is something Mr. Rubino had touched on, is, you know, this is an area of the city that I think was actually highlighted when we did our Parks and Recreation master plan was, in this particular area of the city, was, was lacking some residential amenities for parks, whether it be a trail or whatnot. So I think, I think that's something we, we need to consider as well. So whether that's putting in, in the zoning code, a requirement for a percentage of space that's utilized for green space, you know, things like that, which I know you guys are probably already ahead on that. But just another thought to helping make this, again, I think we're all in agreement that something should be done. I think it's just a matter of finding a balance. And, you know, my, my other concern, since everyone spoke, I'm going to go ahead and give, at least my other concern, my other concern is, I'm being put out of time there? Now, five minutes, yeah. I got five minutes then. My, my other concern would be, dang it, you made me forget now. Yeah, time's up now. I'm at a loss. I lost it.
Mr. Boles.
There will be more discussion, yes.
While you're thinking of that, I do have one question just for Planning and Zoning. The 250-foot back line there for where residential can begin, was that your guys' recommendation, or was that a recommendation from outside of the city?
Mr. Rubino, I'm going to answer that. But actually, the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is the first time they've seen this as well. So they have not had any input yet. They will, now they have their packets, they'll review it, and they'll have time to make a determination at the December 5th meeting. The 250 feet was actually, a bunch of us sat in the office, looked at this GIS map, looked at where the existing buildings are along West Avenue, keeping it to the north side because it abuts residential on the north end. And 250 feet from the center line of West Avenue was a reasonable distance. It doesn't mean that there would not be commercial use behind that dotted line, but it just means that the residential use is not in front.
Right, right. I just didn't know if.
That was the, that was the distance that if you had one row of retail, for example, or doctors' offices, 250 feet is enough area to develop that. You still go over the line, obviously, but that's how that was determined.
And I think part of that, to go back to Mr. Bozick's comment, is to keep that uniformity as, along the corridor, as you, as you look at it, you keep the uniformity with commercial along the frontage of West Avenue.
Yeah.
Along that, along that one side. And then there is opportunity for, again, some, some mixed use closer to the circle on the, on the one.
And I understand commercial can move past that, but obviously where we place that line's going to, or could encourage where it starts and where, how the mix of commercial versus residential truly ends up being, you know, a lot of constituents I talked to big concern about population growth in the city. But they also would love to see the mayor's vision of revitalizing West Avenue, which I think everybody in this room's probably in pretty firm agreement with. I just wonder if that's not enough. Just a thought.
Thank you. I did recall basically what I was hoping to, to ask about or make a point of was, the reason we're not, because it's all zoned commercial now. And if somebody wanted to come in and put in a restaurant, insurance companies, whatever, a little plaza, they could certainly do that now, correct?
Only in C3 areas. C4 is commercial automotive, so if it's a C4, they could not put a, they could not put a restaurant or a daycare or something like that in. And if it's, if it's zoned industrial, then again, you could not put in.
So, for example, on the map, which areas are currently C4?
As I stated in my introduction, the dark red.
The dark red.
Are C4.
Okay.
Okay. The gray is industrial, and the lighter peach color is the C3, general commercial.
Okay, I see the difference now. It is very hard to see that, the difference in color, but I do see that now. I guess my, my question would be, are, is, are these vacant properties, are they not being developed because they, because of the way that they're currently zoned? And if they, if it's because of the way they're currently zoned, would we not accept a variance to change the zoning? And then the second part of that would be, are they not building it because there's no housing behind it? Because if that's what we're talking about, is, well, if we allow housing behind it, then yes, they'll come and build. But if that's not the case, then why aren't they building now? So that's my question. Why aren't they building now? And are they not building it because there's no housing behind them?
So I think just, I would have a concern.
The parts that are shaded green are areas that are available for future development. Those are empty lots that have no, either don't have an existing business in it, or the business is, like, the Kenda parcel is going to become available, it's on the market right now. And then the Rocco Plaza, yes, there's a small plaza on it, but that, that property owner is ready to develop. And then there's, like, the parcel in the front that's owned by Serpentine, that was switched to C4 because Serpentine had asked us to do that, so that they could expand their, their business. But then they acquired the business behind them, so that changed their whole business plan. So now that is a key piece of property right at the circle that is a C4. So that's why the West Avenue overlay is so extremely important, and we don't want to do spot zoning.
So that's correct. And the reason we are, we introduced the overlay district in the zoning code was to eliminate, first of all, the spot zoning, second of all, the becoming a more business-friendly community where we don't require them to go through so many hoops to try to put a business in that, you know, we want the business to come in. If it's zoned C4 and they want to put in a general commercial use, they have to get rezoned. They have to go through planning and zoning, through council, through three readings, public hearings. If we rezone this with the, the uses that have been prescribed in the West Avenue, that will make for a more business-friendly environment.
Right. And I think that's, that's the part that we are all in agreement of, of changing the zoning for the commercial side of it, to make it more attractive, to make it more consistent throughout that whole corridor.
And then to address your residential.
Yes.
Again, that came from, foremost, the feedback from residents at our meetings, that they wanted to have that buffer, that transition of the residential. And so that's how that got introduced. And then in addition, not just that concept plan that you saw, but this area over here is zoned commercial. If it's on Northwest Avenue, this is the Marianne Road, the Garden Street, this is a cute little neighborhood. They really don't want that commercial use back there, but by adding that residential transition, the neighborhood center in here, it allows them for possibly a mixed use or more townhomes or, you know, some residential development in here. So that's kind of what, where that neighborhood center overlay.
And again, I, I understand that residential area, that it's off of Northwest, that makes sense. I'm okay with that. But I think.
But not.
Going, going back to what we were saying is that if, if we believe that the area is not conducive to being redeveloped commercially because there's, we're not allowing residential behind it. it, if that is what we're saying, then we need to say that. But I haven't necessarily heard anyone come out and say that, other than, well, we're giving them the option to have residential on the backside. The whole point of West Avenue should be, or I believe, would be economic development, correct?
And it is. And as I've stated with our community engagement meetings, that we've had several of them.
And I, but that's...
I don't know if you were in attendance...
Again, bear, and that's...
What was strongly opinionated by the residents is that they would want that buffer.
There was about 40, 48 responses, I believe.
But there were more people at the meetings than just the people that responded to the questions.
But that's the information you're giving us, is saying that there were 48 responses. And of the 48 responses, it was overwhelmingly, I even wrote down, an overwhelming response for residential.
Right, 80-some percent?
80-some percent of those 40-some responses.
Right.
So, let's just call it, 35 people are dictating now, saying that this is what we want in our city on West Avenue.
And we're also, I believe, getting into the weeds of things, because this is supposed to be a general overview.
And I understand, I understand a general overview, but the problem that exists, it would be that this is going to carry over, this will go to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning will give their, you know, reviews of it, and then it comes to us on council. So, what I'm trying to prevent is another issue in the future that we've already came over hurdles in the past. So...
And that is why we're having this meeting today. Because I want to have the full conversation...
And that's why I'm telling you, is that, I think, the 35 responses, or more, whatever, even if it was 40, okay? Of the 40 responses, I think that that is a bit preemptive in our discussion for revitalizing West Avenue, if the goal is solely economic development.
Mr. Bozick, I'd like to reclaim some of my five minutes that I have not used, please.
That's fine.
Thank you. I would, you raised the point about, is part of the problem with development on this corridor due to not having enough houses. And another way to say that is population growth, also the demographics, income, you know, related to that. And I'm not a developer, but the feedback that I've heard since being on councils that we are lacking in that area. And now we're hearing that we've actually shrunk in population size, and that's a very dangerous position for a city to be in. So I would say, and maybe Mr. Joyce could speak to what developers are looking for when they want to bring their businesses in, and what is attractive to them, and how having more residents in this area and this immediate vicinity would help development.
Yeah, and I think that is on point, because population growth is part of economic development. Don't get that wrong, because you need population to service these businesses. You need workforce for industrial, commercial, an Amazon. They want to know there's workforce in that area. There's so much competition, such a shortage of workforce, proximity of workforce is key. And so anything you do to add population and, you know, attentive population to what they want to do as a developer, or any other business already here right now. I mean, look, we have a few examples of Petites, right? For example, have refreshed their buildings, everything else, but let's be truthful, most of this corridor does not look like that. Okay? And they're not putting money in their business, their buildings, because they don't have the revenue to do that. Or they're choosing not to. You know? Again, referencing Cogga Falls, you had property owners that didn't want to go first. All right? They're like, okay, show me. Let me see someone else step up and put money into the building. Let's see what that does. And then once that happened, then you saw the others start getting behind. So the goal of this, again, this igniter-type project, is to try to accomplish a couple, that's why it's mixed use, a couple of things you need, all in one place, maximizing the footprint. These properties, especially, I know what we're talking about, the former Rocco site, are so deep, that you're not going to be able to sustain commercial throughout that whole property. And no developer is going to pay for land that they can't use. And so, not now, with what's going on in the industry. So, that's the part that is going to attract those businesses. If I'm the developer, and I've got retail up front, or commercial, or all this space, and I could tell them, look, I got 70 units of housing on me, I mean, these folks are going to be paying, you know, $2,000, $2,500 a month, their average, you know, household income is $80,000, or whatever it's going to be, they're going to know that these folks are going to need services, they're going to look across the street, look what's around, look what's missing, and try to make that all work. And that's what the developers have to do. They have to get a return on their investment. And get the lenders lending money to, you know, convince them that they've got a good project here. So, I think that's the opportunity. And we should take into consideration how it's going to look. We should take into consideration how much green space is going to be there. We should take into consideration how we're going to include the older neighborhood behind into this opportunity. Because we're trying to create a somewhat walkable, accessible community, getting up to the front of West Avenue at some point. Because if not, you're risking, the other direction this goes is blight. It's empty. It's more closure. It's, especially if population keeps dropping. So that's the real danger. You've got plenty of traffic going through here, but that traffic's just trying to get to the circle, right? And go around to where it's trying to go, and just bypassing everything in front of it, then that defeats the whole point. So you want something that's going to attract their eyes, say, hey, wait, what's this? I should slow down and turn here and see what's going on here, you know? So that's just kind of how we look at it. And again, we're seeing this across those communities you're talking about. This is a statewide issue. If I had, you know, apartment development here right now, they'll tell you that, that's why they have the Transformational Mixed Use Development Program. Because they know that's what works. So I think that's what you've got to try to, you know, try to utilize here. Again, if the right project and the right opportunity comes, and everyone drinks.
I think one thing we've learned is that developers want to pack as many homes into an area as possible, to make it as profitable for them as possible. And I think we've seen examples of that here in Talmage. And I think that the citizens of Talmage have overwhelmingly shown their opposition to that. I don't think anybody's against talking about any options. I think that that line is way too close. I think that we should be focusing more on the commercial aspect than the residential. And that line tells me we're focusing more on the residential, even though commercial could move far past that line. I think buffer zones could be an acre of wooded area, as much as they are 150 homes in an area that, in a city where people have already complained about tight, living-quartered neighborhoods that all look the same, and so on and so forth. Like you said, I don't think that anybody here is opposing anything 100% one way or the other. I think that we're trying to have a good conversation, and we're trying to all represent our constituents the best we can, and make sure whatever plan we put in place for the city for the next 20 years is a plan that we're going to like, that we can grow with, and that we're not going to keep looking out our window and see, man, we could have done better on that. So, I think to your point that, you know, I don't think anybody's trying to put down the plan. I think that there is things that we should all probably talk about, so that when it does hit council floor, you get seven yeses versus a different outcome.
And thank you very much. And just a response to the survey. This survey was just a tool that was used to help with the engagement at the meetings. We had over 100 people attend the three meetings combined, and these were 47 unique responses to that survey, and they were not proactively sent out. So this survey was not sent out, it was not broadcast on our website. It was just a survey of the people that took the time to come to the meeting about this. And so that's where these responses came from. These people were invested in this area. So that's where the feedback came from. Just so that you have the correct information.
Was there any input from anyone that was here in attendance? Because I know we have a list, community input and discussion, so if anybody in the audience would like to come up to the podium and speak, they can certainly do so as well. Just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Poppy Johnston. I'm with Man Parsons Gray Architects, address 3660 Embassy Parkway, Fairlon. Tonight I'm here to answer any technical questions regarding the overall developments that were, has been mentioned. There is, there's been multiple developers that have looked at this site. There have been ongoing discussions about what we can do to make this a great start, a jumpstart for Talmage. It's been mentioned this evening about that. And it goes with giving back to the community, making sure, having that rejuvenation for the community. There's things about these types of developments that need to be considered, and everybody's been kind of talking about it. There's the infrastructure that needs to get done, the investment that's made by the developers upfront, all of this, all the miscellaneous meetings that have to happen, and how that giant risk that they are taking to potentially get shot down. And hopefully not, but at the same time, making sure that we're being compliant, following those checks and balances. Tonight we're here talking about zoning. They have set standards that Talmage wants, that has been set forth in multiple codes and requirements. The architecture, the character of Talmage, making sure that that actually gets put into this area where, frankly speaking, I think it is lacking it. I'm not a Talmage resident. I've driven, excuse me, driven by numerous times of this area. I've been involved with the city. My office helped with Station 2. There's a lot that I want to be able to give back and be proud of with Talmage, with some accounting. And this is where, I think, a first step with somebody, working with the developer, we hear you when it comes to the distance with the residential aspect. When you talk about these types of communities, it's a 55 older. We talk about making sure that it's a walkable place. Make sure you have people that are, it's a pretty, it's 20, I think it's 20.4 acres, or 24 acres, something like that. That's a big space. And thinking about that from a commercial aspect, do we want to have an Amazon right there on that? That's a question that I think probably wants to be considered, or has been considered. I know from just interactions with some people, that that's not really a desire. How can we do something better for Talmage? And that's where we look at doing a multi-use development, making sure that we have that, those services for the people, the residents that are potentially going to be coming in, and the residents that live here in Talmage, coming down wannabe-along-the-street way. When it comes to these types of developments as well, the people that are using them, I guess I can touch on the services for the city. I know it hasn't been mentioned here, but it would be something that will come forward eventually, is the studies that we're seeing, it's roughly 75% are going to be one or two family households. So we're not talking about three, four, five. We're not talking about lots of children. So we're not talking about putting services into the school system that Talmage is proud of. I know that there are more students, and you want to make sure that the teachers, that you can't find. You want to keep those teachers. You don't want to burden them with those types of things. So, a development like that we are talking about here is actually based upon standards across Northeast Ohio, the rest of Ohio. You're looking at maybe 5%, 5, maybe 10% when it comes to the children. And that's total children, 0 to 18. That's not just set-school-age children. This is a step for the young generation coming in and wanting to have their first home, but cannot afford to buy a house right now. 2020 was, it was fun for those trying to build, those trying to purchase. And we saw a great transition from the wanting to have more inside your homes, and wanting to be able, that less of a risk in those homes. And that's where a rentable townhome, or multifamily development, that's where you hit that, you give the city an opportunity to get those folks that aren't actually looking at Talmage, they're going somewhere else. Bring them here, keep them here, jumpstart them to start in Talmage, stay in Talmage. And at the end of the day, give back to Talmage. That's really what we're trying to do with here. We've referenced several other cities where they did this. It's slow, and it's something that is definitely going to be very, and it works. It's working. And people are coming back, and more, what's going to happen? Maybe the existing developers, they're not going to, they're going to sell. Somebody, a new developer's going to take the risk, buy it, and then they're going to have to come to this board and talk about how they're going to either demolish, do a new build, be in compliance, or completely renovate, do something like what Petites did. This is only good for the city. Good for the construction side, good from long-term development and use, so.
Thank you. And I think most, again, most of us are all in agreement that doing something about revitalizing West Avenue is a good thing. I am a little bit in disagreement with the investment. If residential was such a high priority for certain investors or property developers, what would stop them from, say, going to Saxon Village, Gaslight Village? What would stop them from going to those areas that are currently zoned residential and redeveloping that?
First of all, the traffic on those streets. And second of all, they're not available. They're not up for sale.
And I understand that, but if it's such a high demand, high, maybe not a high profit, but a profitable investment, let's say, then the purchasing of those properties, whether they're for sale or not, at least proposing that to those owners, I think that would certainly be something that would be, it would have been something we would have heard of by now. We would have heard of an investor saying, hey, we want to buy up this area because we feel that this is a good spot, as mentioned earlier, location, 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 that this is a good spot. Those are right off of West Avenue. If those are such high-demand areas...
Mr. Bozick?
Attractive areas.
Just to, if I can reference two places in Cuyahoga Falls, both projects I'm familiar with on Front Street, they have, and that's a different situation, but they are commercial buildings with residential above them, different concept, of course, but they have been extremely successful.
Right.
They're all rented, or sold, whatever the case is, depending on whether they're condos or not. My point is, there are developers out there, and maybe I should connect you with one, so you could talk with them to understand what they're thinking is. I don't know the numbers and can't tell you the financial part of it, but there is definitely a need and a desire for these developers to bring a, in some cases, you know, many of them don't do that, but the ones that do believe that bringing this residential component into their developments is important from a financial standpoint, from a heads-on-beds standpoint, and so many other, I'm sure, categories and reasoning criteria behind that. So, that I have to believe is, you know, what, again, there are successful ones out there. Not all of them do that, but there are many out there that are.
Great. And I just, again, knowing a few residential areas that I just mentioned, I would be very shocked if a developer came by and said, hey, we're willing to buy your property, if they wouldn't sell. I would be very shocked. Now, the other thing is with, well, I'll leave it at that. Now, the other thing is with, well, I'll leave it at that. Are there any other points of discussion? I guess we'll kind of open it up if there's any other last minute, Mr. Councilmember Rubino.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, based on some of the things that you said up there, that the developers taking risks, and I, you know, I truly think it should be a partnership between the city and the developer. However, the developer's main goal is to make as much money off as little bit of area as possible, and at the end of the, they, I'm sure they want it to look nice, I'm sure that they want it to be successful, but at the end of the day, that's the bottom line. They're not in it as a charity or a civic project. Our main concern should be to the residents of the city, because we're going to have to live with those decisions for the next twenty, thirty-plus years, and they can either end up extremely well, or they can end up not so well. So I think having a healthy discussion and questioning certain aspects, or thinking of what else could we do, or how could we satisfy some of these needs, I think is what's needed, because like I said, I think that the developer's going to do what's absolutely best for their bottom line first, and hopefully that works out for the city, hopefully that works out for the residents, but ultimately, we need to be the safekeepers of that to make sure that hopefully the developer does great work, and they can be a future partner here in the city, but ultimately, we need to make sure that it's fitting the viewpoints, the vision of the people at Talmage, and what they've told us in the past, whether that is in a questionnaire at, at the overlay meetings, which I'm sure, I, I went to one or two, they were great, or the feedback that we've gotten over the past several years as certain developments have been looked as favorable, and some have very much not been looked at favorably, so just putting that out there.
Just one point of contention, if I could, not to, but, and I will say that most people are in business to make as much money as they possibly can and to, to make the most impact that they possibly can, but I think we're selling developers short again, in my opinion, because these people are in business and have a reputation, and have been in business for many years, many of them, and it is not their intention to come in and create a development that's going to, you know, end up as everyone thinks is going to with these rental properties, Section Eight and so on. Again, they have a reputation, have been in business for decades in many cases, not all of them, of course, but that is something that we will look at as a Planning and Zoning Commission, and you will as the council. So again, I just don't want us to sell developers short and, and think that this is just a money grab for these folks. I mean, that's kind of how I feel.
And I agree a hundred percent, and I'll use this as an example, and then I'll end my portion here. My in-laws live just maybe, maybe a half a mile from our border on the Akron side. They lived on a very quiet street that was a great place to grow up, had a nice wooded area at the end, other than the cable company that was at the end, but very little burden there. First, they tore down a few houses across the street and put in some very nice condos, and they were very nice, and they were high-end, and that's what they, that's what was promised, and they were like, okay, this isn't so bad. Fast forward a few years later, they started not going empty, and now they're Section Eight, and now they've had drive-bys in front of their house. Then they took the wooded area up the street that everybody loved so much, and they said, you know what, we're going to build this really nice retirement home for vets. Now, it's something completely different to where they have people with very serious disorders walking up and down their street all day and night, stealing mail out of their mailboxes, they can't even pay their bills by putting their bills in the mailbox anymore because their stuff is stolen, and it's because the developer had every good intention, didn't end up that way. I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but I'm saying that those possibilities exist, and that's what we need to try to safeguard from. And that's one street that is four hundred yards long compared to what West Avenue could be, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. So obviously, thank you, administration, planning and zoning for your attendance tonight, Helene, for all this material and work that you've put into this. It will be my reading material every evening for the next several weeks, I think. And administration, Joe, thank you. Mayor Kilway, Law Director, thank you for all the information. I think moving forward, obviously, discussion needs to continue. I think we need to find a happy median between what's going to be the biggest impact for the city, what's going to be our, our long-term vision and goal for the city. So, and I think, I think we have all that, all of us have that in mind, we each have our own difference of, a little bit difference of opinion on it, but, so thank you. Mayor, do you have any last parting comments?
No, I just want to thank everyone for coming here. I was hoping to get out in an hour, and it was two hours, I'm sorry. So, yes, there, you have a lot of information to read. Helene and Megan have done a lot of work on the legal aspects of it, so please read all of the information. Like I said, an immense amount of work has gone into this since January, so it's not something that we've thrown together in a couple of weeks or anything like that. A lot of work has gone into this, and we've taken all of the recommendations from those impacted the most, and, and gone forward with it, with their recommendations, so please give me a call if you have any questions, if you need any more information, we'll get it out to you, but I want to thank everyone for their time this evening, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I could just say one more thing, so the next steps for this, so what the goal is really, is to map these two areas, so consider that as you're reading through, and that you read the zoning co-checks. I'm available if you have questions, too. Please call or email, and I'll try to explain it as much as possible, how it's written and what it means, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. And then I'll just ask one point order question to our Law Director. We need to take a motion for adjournment and a roll call vote?
You can take a voice vote this evening.
Okay. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are officially adjourned, thank you. The time is six fifty-eight. Thank you.